And I would like to call our May 14th Commissioner meeting to order. If you will, please join Vice Chairman Langley as he does our invocation and Commissioner Waters as he does our pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to come together. God, we just ask your blessings upon this budget season, God, that we will do what's right and pleasing in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
I'd like to ask if any Commissioners or anyone here has a conflict of interest of any of the that they'd like to disclose at this time. Hearing none, we move forward for the approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda.
I approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. We're down to item E, items for decision. Mr. Booth, Commissioner Booth, I'm sorry.
This is a resol-- oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution that I asked the clerk to work on for the people at our school system that have done an exceptional job. Attached is the new resolution. She have sent it out two or three times for us to look over and tonight, we're going to present this for approval. And I make a motion that we approve this resolution and forward it to the both county school systems.
I'll second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Do we need to read that resolution, Brian? Okay. We're down to item F, items for presentation. And at this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our County Manager, Brian Alligood, to go over the recommended budget presentation. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And as you guys have seen this multiple times, so if you will indulge with me just for a little bit, for those who may be watching who haven't seen it before, those who may look in, kind of want to make sure we go over it again so folks understand the document. You have in your binder that you've been presented the FY 2021 Recommended Annual Budget. That is required by North Carolina General Statute 159 and the North Carolina Local Budget Physical Control Act. As you recall, there are three sections in that binder. The first section is the continuation budget of all funds necessary to carry out the services authorized by the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners. And that section contains financial information and narrative descriptions of the programs and services. The narrative portions of the section were created to help establish the purpose and function of the different departments and programs and to better educate the reader about county services. So we really tried to make an emphasis on people reading the budget and understanding not only what the departments do, but where the money goes and how the money is spent. We believe that's critical. Financial summaries are in there as well as line item details. So on the, you'll see a roll up on the top page, and then when you flip the page, you'll see the line item detail for that department. And it goes back and shows prior years. The second section in the budget is information on 21 general fund and five enterprise fund service expansions that are proposed by departments or outside agencies that are seeking additional funding. This section is new or different programs or things that change existing programs. And the reason we do that is we bring you a budget, what we call the continuation budget, that simply continues the services that you are providing this year in next year. And then any changes in that is a policy decision that's driven by the board. So we bring those to you separately. Obviously, as you go through this budget, you'll make changes to the continuation budget and you'll review and look at the service expansions. But we separate it out so that you'll see exactly what it is that you, in the planning section, have directed us to tell you what it takes to continue to provide the existing services you have. And then the third section in the budget in the very back is the fee manual. And that's a manual that we look at and provide to you every year, which is an opportunity to recover some of the costs in fees that are specific to specific programs. It's not the general taxes, but it is specific programs and services that are provided. It helps offset some of those costs for people who directly receive those services. The budget is balanced and is prepared in accordance with the policies and procedures outlined in the Local Government Budget and Physical Control Act. Again, the process, you're very well aware of the process, but for those who may not be aware of the process, although budgeting is a constantly ongoing process, it officially kicks off, and it kicked off this year on January the 22nd, at the Board's planning retreat. And that's where we discussed anticipations of what may be coming up, what you wanted to see in the budget, and different things relating to the programs. We took that direction and that guidance went back to our department heads. We distributed budget packages to them in late January. They returned those budget requests in early March. We then had individual meetings, the Finance Officer and I did, with individual department managers and went through their budget requests, line item by line item, to look at historical trends, what they were requesting, and whether they were appropriate and whether we needed to make some additions or whether we may need to make some subtractions. We do that, and then we finalize those in April. In late April is when we start looking at the revenues really hard because the revenue that, based on when business, personal property are required to come in for filings, that's not until April 15th. So we're not able to really finalize our revenue until late April. So that was done in late April. And then the first week of May, we do a final review and then we put the budget together to come to you. The budget itself is presented tonight at a special call meeting on May 14th. You are scheduled to hold budget work sessions during the next two weeks to discussion, make changes in the recommended budget. And then a public hearing is scheduled at the Commissioners' regular meeting on June the 1st. That's the opportunity for the public. The budget itself is put out there. It'll go out tomorrow for people to look at on the web as well as in the clerk's office. So folks will get the opportunity, the public will get the opportunity to look at it, just as you get the opportunity to look at it at the same time. And then they have the opportunity to come in and make comments on that at your public meeting on June the 1st. And it is anticipated that you'll adopt that budget after you make changes and other things on June the 8th at a special call meeting. However, the budget has to be adopted by June 30th. The goals for the budget, as we look at every year, are first, to continue to rely upon physical plans and systems in the preparation of the proposed budget. We want to be looking at plans and having a long-term look at where we're going. We conservatively try to estimate revenues and expenditures to avoid expectations of performance that are not realistic in a budget. We also try to create an atmosphere where efforts to spend down during the fiscal year are discouraged. That's why you'll see at the end of the fiscal year, we have departments, our expenditure side is at 97, 96.5, 97, 98 percent. You don't see our department heads running like you see at other levels of government, running at the end of the fiscal year to try to spend all of their money down because they're afraid they won't get it next year. We work very hard with our department heads to help them understand that they need to be spending what they need to provide the services and not try to spend it down at the end of the year because they're afraid they might not get it back. There are some other levels of government that that's kind of the norm, and we don't do that. We also, and our goal is to present a budget that reevaluates all the expenditures and allows for policy review of potential service reductions or expansions based on the Board's policy directives. Again, this is your budget. I make a recommendation to you on a budget, but ultimately, the budget that you adopt is how you get the things done for your constituents that you want to get done. And we put together a starting point for you and you as the Board of the policymakers and make those decisions and craft that budget in the way you want to. Also, the budget, we hope, provides an analysis of the different cost centers in order to more clearly demonstrate where general fund tax dollars are being spent and what services are being provided. Again, not only is it a financial document, but we hope it is a very clear educational document as well, so that people can read and understand not only what things do, but what the finances are relating to that. So overall, for the budget, the recommended budget allocates funding to continue the many critical services that are provided to the citizens of Beaufort County. So we haven't deleted any services. We've maintained the services that you have. Due to the still unknown economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, the recommended budget expenditures are cut below prior year levels to balance with the projected decreased revenue estimates. Sales tax are particularly volatile. They always are anyway, but they're more particularly volatile now. And just the mechanism of how those funds come in, there's a three-month lag from the collection, from the private sector, to distribution back to the local government. So it's a three-month lag. So it will likely be December before we are able to validate our estimates against actuals. So a little more of a challenge for us. The recommended budget maintains county of the lower tax rate is 63.5 cent per $100 of assessed valuation. And the assumed collection rate would generate approximately $36.6 million in property tax revenue. It does maintain all county services and programs that were provided in the prior year. The general fund budget is $59.2 million, and it's $411,681 less than the original fiscal year 1920 budget. The recommended budget maintains the public school system, both K-12 and the community college funding at prior year levels. I will note that we received the fiscal year 2021 K-12 budget request on May 12th earlier this week, after we'd already completed the recommended budget. And I will note for you, as I have in here, that we do have a concern with a piece of that budget in that it looks as though, the way they've shown it, they're using some one-time funding for recurring a cost that we believe may set the stage for a tax increase in the next fiscal year to maintain those current levels of funding. The Board will just need to be very careful as it looks through that. We try extremely hard not to use one-time money for recurring expenses because all it does is set you up for a position where you've got to find another revenue source in the next year. So I would call that to your attention. The recommended budget also continues to fund the capital improvements fund that was established by the Board last year. That's one penny of projected tax rate revenue that was to go into a special fund that is for capital improvements. As you'll recall, at your Board meeting this month, you voted to advance a portion of the fiscal year 2021 capital funding for the courthouse renovation project. And what we'll do is, after the Board adopts the budget, once we get into the new fiscal year, we'll make a budget amendment to adjust that back and make that correction. So you'll see where it comes in in this budget, and then we'll adjust it back and make sure it's correct. The recommended budget maintains the prior year fire and tax EMS rates in all districts. We do have a conversations with those outside entities and ask them where they are with their funding and their funding needs, and there were no requested increases in fire or EMS. The recommended budget also does recommend an increase in the solid waste fee by $5. That's $5 per household. That would take it to 160 from 155. And that's to offset the cost of increasing solid waste tonnage and help pay for needed maintenance at solid waste collection sites. And I know the Solid Waste Committee is working hard on that, but it is absolutely incredible, the growth, the year-over-year growth in the amount of trash that's thrown away in this county. It's really incredible. The recommended budget also increases water rates by 3%, and that is in accordance with the long-term funding plan established and approved by the Board in fiscal year 1819. This is the third year of the five-year plan to equalize rates across all districts due to the consolidation of those districts into one operational fund. The recommended budget also maintains the administrative charges to enterprise funds to help offset the cost to the general fund for providing services to the enterprise fund. These administrative charges are based on per-unit fee specifics that are specific to the services provided by enterprise fund. So what that means is we have an enterprise fund, like the water fund, that's paid for by water rates. But there are general fund personnel, myself, the Finance Officer, other folks who are paid out of general fund tax dollars, who work for that enterprise fund and provide services to that enterprise fund. And it's only appropriate that the time that is spent by general fund employees working for an enterprise fund should be charged to that enterprise fund because an enterprise fund is supposed to carry its own weight and not be supplemented by general fund tax dollars. Again, the recommended general fund budget for continuing operations is $59.2 million this year. It does maintain the tax rate at 63.5 cent. The tax, the estimated taxable valuation this year is $5.88 billion, and that's made up of $5.415 billion in real and personal property and $467 million in motor vehicles. Collection for real and personal property taxes is assumed in the budget at 98% and 100% for motor vehicles. Looking back, the real and personal collection rate is up 0.28% from last year. So there's been a really good effort to increase that collection percent year-over-year. I think last year it was, prior year it was like 0.13, 0.12. It's this year from prior year, it's 0.28% from the prior audited period. Now, the local government and Budget and Physical Control Act allows the revenue estimate that we make to use the prior year audited collection rate, which that collection rate was 98.29%. However, due again to our, to the unknown economics that are going to come out of the COVID-19 pandemic, we've not used that number. We've dropped it, we brought it back to 98%. So roughly, that number's about $100,000. It gives us a little bit about $100,000 in cushion because we just don't know what those collections are going to be like on that side as we go through this. The total estimated real property valuation in the upcoming fiscal year is up approximately 1.49%. It's about $79 million from the last fiscal year, so that's a good thing. Those rates were set January 1 of 2020. You have, again, we show you what the tax rate is on the eight-year cycle. And so eight years ago, in the same revaluation, in the same valuation cycle, eight years ago, it was 53 cent. Again, the next section of that shows the sales ratio study that's done by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, which essentially equalizes taxes across all counties in North Carolina. You'll get the rate, and you'll get the ratio, and then that will give you an effective tax rate so you can look at apples to apples across all counties. We provide that, we provided that to you for several years now. What you'll see, again, is that our tax rate at 63.5 cent. Our sales ratio this year, that was calculated January 1 of 2020, I'm sorry, last year, was, they just did, in fact, I've got the 2020, but that's not what this is. This is the 2019, the January 1, 2019 sales ratio, because they use 2020 for the upcoming tax rate that you're getting ready to set. And then we'll get those, we'll get that information in September. It'll be published in September. But this ratio of 0.9871, which was January 1 of 2019, shows that the market rate of property in Beaufort County has already increased by 1.29%. What we saw previously was that it was going the wrong way. The assessed value was higher than the market value, and that was really something unusual. And we hadn't seen that with the recession. But now, when the property, remember, when you do reevaluation, the goal is to have it at 1. The market rate equals the assessed rate. Now, our assessed rate stays put for eight years. And what you generally expect is you set your rate at this, at the eighth year on the revaluation, and then the market begins to continue to go up. Our stays the same. So you'll see that that trend has started, which is a good thing. It means that property is appreciating and values are going up. So when you multiply 63.5 cent by 98.71 sales ratio, it actually shows that the effective rate in Beaufort County is 62.68 cent. And we rank 45th among all 100 counties in our, in high to low. You'll see our neighbors, Washington County is actually ranked, with 100 being the highest, they're actually ranked 97th in the state of North Carolina. And our neighbor to the south, Graven County is ranked 21. So I think the only folks that changed position since last year was Hyde and Pitt. But that kind of gives you an example of where we stand across the state. Projected sales tax revenues are down a little over $1 million, or about 11.22% from prior year original estimates, and that's due to what we're estimating from the COVID-19 pandemic. The intentional shutdown of the economy in an effort to flatten the curve of the virus relates directly to this estimate. Again, the sales tax lagged three months, so we'll be into December before we get a really good feel for that. One of the, one of the things that we just don't have a good feel for, because, you know, I don't know that there's, I don't ever recall there being an intentional economic The last time we had an issue in the economy was because of structural issues in the economy. The financial market got a little out of whack, which caused the recession, the Great Recession to occur. This has been a man-made intentional stoppage of the economy in an effort to, again, flatten the curve for the virus. So it's really unusual. You continue to hear economists talk about a V-shaped curve, where we bounced back pretty quickly. Then you also hear economists talk about a U-shaped curve, where it's slower. And now you hear some of the economists talking about a W-shaped curve, where it's down, up, and then we take another hit, and then we go back up again. So we are in uncharted territory with not much history to go on. So we're kind of flying a little bit blind. That's why we're trying to use estimates that we get from the association to help us figure out what that, what those estimates may be, what those estimates may look like. Intergovernmental revenues are estimated to slightly increase by $272,000 in the next fiscal year. But the overwhelming majority of that increase is related to a new revenue stream in the EMS Medicaid cost reimbursement, and that's $215,000. So there's, almost the entire majority of that increase is due to that new revenue stream. All the other revenues in that category are projected down, except for a slight increase in federal and state grants. Now, there may be some additional money. We know there's money coming in from the pandemic recovery office. We will receive about $1 million, a little less than $1 million, and that was, that came from the state of North Carolina that was passed, that was passed through from the state of North Carolina that came down from the federal government under the CARES Act, has to be used for pandemic relief. We'll bring that back to you in June to look at and make some decisions on, but a really strict criteria in which you can use that money for. And it has, and there's the opportunity to also share those funds with local municipalities in their efforts. License and fees in general fund and other general fund revenues are slightly up by $134,000, but that too is entirely due to new SRO grants in the amount of $368,000. So that completely offsets any of the reductions that are there. So those are some additional SRO grants that came from the state that we did not have in the prior year. Investment earnings are projected to decrease by 50%, taking a tremendous hit there. And of course, that's due to the interest rate cuts by the Fed in response to the pandemic. The recommended budget appropriates $0 in fund balance. Last year, we appropriated $136,395, so this year, we don't anticipate allocating any. As of June 30th, 2019, the unassigned fund balance was $15.9 million, or about 27.18% of expenditures. At the close of this fiscal year, 1920, we estimate that the unassigned general fund balance will be about $17.7 million, or about 29.96, almost 30% of expenditures. At the close of the upcoming fiscal year that we're projecting for you here, 2021, we estimate that that amount to be the same because we're not appropriating any fund balance. And if everything goes strictly according to the budget, you'll be right where you are. Of course, that won't happen because there will probably be some additions or some deletions. So we, last year, we added two fund balance, and my anticipation is we will add two fund balance in this, in this current fiscal year, maybe. We have taken about a million-dollar swing on our sales tax so far, and next year, we just don't know. We don't, we'll wait and see how it all plays out. You'll see the chart that shows the anticipated revenue sources for next year. If you look back at last year's budget, you'll see that the property tax piece of the pie, I think, was about 61 or 62%. And of course, the sales tax was a little bit larger, so it's shifting more to the property taxes to cover those. So for the expenditure side, just to note, all of the cost centers across all the general fund and the enterprise funds had an increase in personnel benefits costs due to an increase in retirement contributions that were mandated by the State Treasurer's Office and also health insurance benefits from the state of North Carolina. So each of the departments was dealing with that initial hit already. Under the general government cost centers, when we exclude debt service and transfers to other funds, expenditures in these cost centers were decreased overall by 5.58% from the original, from last year's original budget. The majority of the departments were flat or had decreases. And the overall decrease was driven by the election cycle reductions at the Department of Elections. And in years where you don't have a municipal election, those costs are down or less than presidential. So the cycles go up and down as the election cycles do. So the, was driven by that reduction. And then there was a decrease in contingency. We did not put as much in contingency. Human services cost centers, those expenditures increased overall by 1.15%, and that was driven mostly by increases at DSS, but that is due to state expenditure estimates. County share dollars in DSS this year are flat compared to last year. We asked DSS to come back with a flat budget. And although their budget overall is up, that's because state programs are up. But the county share dollar that we have to put in is equal to, is flat from last year. Health Department is the same way. They actually froze a position so that their share of county dollars, because they have the same way with, like, DSS, they get state funding and federal funding that has, that's matched with county funding, they were able to keep their county share dollars flat as well. Under the community services cost centers, those expenditures increased overall by 2.11%, and that is completely due to the increase in JCPC funding, which was related to the Raise the Age legislation that was passed by the General Assembly last year. So they put additional funding in that. All the other areas in that cost center were flat or had decreases. In the educational cost center, you'll recall, we talked about, the school system was held flat at the 1920 funding levels. And again, we want you to make sure you review the school system because we're a little bit concerned that they show some one-time money for recurring cost, and we certainly don't want to be in an issue, in a situation where, not this year, but next year, you look at a, you're looking at a tax increase to try to cover that same level of funding because you use one-time funding for a recurring cost. In the public safety cost centers, expenditures in these are decreased overall by 0.03%, so just a little bit below. The Sheriff's Office budget is flat across, it's all three of its divisions, while absorbing the personnel salary changes it made in the last fiscal year. Emergency management is down due to a vehicle purchase in fiscal year 1920, and the medical examiner's budget is down from the prior year. In this budget, in this cost center, EMS requested the replacement of an ambulance, but it was deferred due to the overall budget constraints. We think we're going to be okay with that, to push it out an additional year. We just don't want to get too far behind on those vehicle replacements, both for safety and for trying to keep our budgets in a manner where we don't have spikes in the budget based on, based on large expenditures. So you'll see in that pie chart as well, and those percentages stay the same. Even though the, even though the numbers are down, those percentages stay the same. You'll see that education is your highest cost center. Public safety, or human services and public safety come in second and third, and then general government's behind that. And I would submit to you that that's generally the way it is across the entire state of North Carolina. Education is the highest funding, followed by social services or human services, and then typically, public safety. In your enterprise funds, and you're aware you have two enterprise funds, the water fund and the solid waste fund. In the water fund, the recommended budget is $7.5 million. That includes the continuation of a rate study that was established in 198-- That includes the continuation of a rate study that was established in nineteen-eight in FY eighteen-nineteen that consolidates existing rates over a five-year period into a uniform rate for all customer classes, and then includes a three percent increase in water rates as recommended by the study that you're following. It does continue the ten-year capital improvement plan for the entire water system that was also established in FY eighteen-nineteen. Expenditures in the amount of fifty-four-thousand dollars are recommended for capital, and there's an estimated one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars that will be added to the water fund fund balance reserve, which helps pay for future debt service and stabilize future rate increases. And the board set that knowing that, based on the debt service that had been put in place years ago to establish that system, that they needed to set money aside to be able to make those debt service payments and to, and to stabilize any future rate increases. So that continues. And then in the solid waste fund, the recommended budget is three-point-eight-million dollars, which is three-point-six-three percent greater than the prior year, and that's due to the five-dollar increase that's recommended. It would take the rate from one-fifty-five per, per parcel with a structure on it, not a business structure, but a, a structure that uses the service, from one-fifty-five to one-sixty, and that increase is required to pay for the increased tonnage at the disposal sites. And then, of course, it also continues to transfer money back to the general fund for services that are provided by the general fund to the solid waste fund. So in summary, the recommended budget for the county provides services and operations, and it does so at the current ad valorem rate of sixty-three-and-a-half percent, so there is no tax increase. It reduces general fund expenditures to below prior year levels and attempts to anticipate revenue changes due to the impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The budget does increase fees associated with water and solid waste enterprise funds in order to maintain operations and continue implementation of previously approved plans. As you know, it is an understatement to say that these are unprecedented times. However, Beaufort County is not alone as we face this threat because COVID, the COVID-nineteen pandemic is taking lives and destroying economies across North Carolina, the United States, and the world. Restarting local, state, and world economies, which we've never put world economies in this before, we always talk about restarting and, and how the local economy and the state economy is always going to play in our budget. And I know that we already talked about how the world economy plays into it, but the restarting of, of local, state, and world economies in the, in the FY twenty-twenty budget will be an important factor in the performance of this budget. As we talked about earlier, unfortunately, at this time, we're making estimates based on events for which we have no control, and we have no real historic analysis to draw from. Our sales tax numbers provide an additional challenge for us as they lag collections to distribution by three months, and it's likely will be December before we are able to validate our estimates to actuals. As you know, this current fiscal year, Beaufort County was poised to have a great year, and then the pandemic hit. Our revenues were up, and we had programs that we were looking to implement, such as the salary study, and they were on track to be implemented based on those increased revenues. Unfortunately, due to revenue uncertainty, these programs will be delayed again, and our hope is that the economy will rebound quickly in the second half of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, and those programs can again move forward, but we just don't know where we are right now. I would like to take the opportunity to, to thank the finance department, Anita Radcliffe and her staff for the outstanding job they did. Putting together a budget is a tremendous effort, and they did a great job of creating an informative and functional document that serves both as a management tool and an outline for which the board can debate policy, and I'm very appreciative of all their hours of hard work. Likewise, department managers did an absolutely outstanding job of analyzing and compiling budgets to meet the expectations they were given. We sat down with them and said, "Look, you got to bring this one in flat. You got to be flat or below," even with some of the departments who, who have lots of personnel costs, and they got hit right to start with, with a, with a, with an increase in health insurance and retirement. They were able to bring those, those costs in under. They, they deserve many thanks and tremendous admiration for the job they do. Again, I say this every year, and I mean it every time I say it, the people who choose to work in local government are truly special people who care about their community and take pride in providing services that make life better for others, and I am eternally grateful to have the privilege to work with each and every one of them. So that is the budget. It is my privilege to submit that to you, and I look forward to our discussions as we go through it. With your, with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I would like to talk just a little bit about the budget schedule and get some direction from the board on that, based on the pandemic and, and the restrictions that we're under and, and some of the complications that that causes. Typically, what we do is you get the budget tonight, you're able to spend some time on that, and if you have questions, you, you all send us comments, and we research that and get those questions ready for you. When we come back in on Tuesday, May the nineteenth, for a general fund discussion where we'll go in-depth on the general fund. Typically, when we do that, we bring department heads in. And then on Thursday, May the twenty-first, we would do general fund and enterprise funds, and then Tuesday, May the twenty-sixth, we would do service expansions where we would bring in outside agencies or, or department heads who were requesting service expansions. What I would suggest to you in this year's budget is not to bring department heads in under general fund discussion or enterprise fund discussion. I'm fairly confident that Anita and I can handle those questions you may have. If we can't, we'll get the department, we'll get up with the department head, we'll, we'll figure it out, and we'll get that information back to you at the next session. But it would keep, it would keep us from putting a whole lot of people in a room at one time, which we're, which we don't need to do. So that would be my suggestion on that. I would also suggest to you that you don't bring in outside agencies. I would suggest to you that you look at the service expansions, because typically, what we do is we bring everybody in on the service expansions, and they make their pitch to you, because that's kind of what service expansions are. It's for you to look at and say, "Yes, I like that. No, I don't like that, and I'm willing to fight for that in the budget and figure out a way to do it," and they're essentially kind of selling that to you. My recommendation to you this year is that you just not do that. There is no money for service expansions this year, and, and there's really not a need, I think, to bring folks in, put them in a situation where we're putting a lot of people together with potential, you know, issues with, with transmission. And what I would say to you, though, is, as you go through the budget, if you see service expansions that you like, that you want to discuss further, we can bring those individual groups in, or any individual person in to talk about it, or we can talk about it if you'd like for us to. We can pull that out and talk about it specifically. There are a couple of service expansions in your budget that are zero cost. They've been estimated to be zero-cost service expansions. There's one in economic development where we have our, the administrative assistant at economic development is retiring this year, actually at the middle of the, or the end of the fiscal year, and the economic development director would like to change that position from an administrative assistant to more of an analyst position. And what he's done is he's worked up with the help, with the HR director, what that new job description would be and what that person would do and what that salary range would be. He's taken that salary range, he's, he's put it against what the current salary is for his administrative assistant, and then he's cut his budget, he shows cuts to his budget in the service expansion to make that flat, you know, to make it a no-impact cost, because he really believes that, that they could do a whole lot more with, with an analyst position than, than essentially a, a secretarial position. And then there's a position, there's a service expansion from the health department that's similar, and Mr. Madison has a position that he believes that he can adjust and move and make it a, a revenue-neutral or an expense-neutral position. And then the remainder of those are asking for new or additional money, and, and I would suggest to you that, I just don't know where that new or additional money is right now, and we, and we won't know, at least probably for another six months. So there is the opportunity. If you, you know, you always have that opportunity to amend a budget during the middle of the budget. We can come back in December, which we will do anyway. You know, we always have those updates to show you where we are. But if things just, if things just pop and they jump right back up and we're doing really well, and you want to come back and look at some things, you know, in December, we can certainly do that, but we just don't know where we're going to be, and we want to be very conservative and cautious with that. So if you can do those things for me and give me a little bit of direction on that, I would ask you, I'm not sure what you might want to do with the schools or the community college. We have tested in here such that we can do a, a WebEx call where I can actually set the laptop up and plug it into the screen, and you'll be able to see on the video monitors the person on the other side of the WebEx call, and you can interact with them and ask questions. We can certainly do it that way if you'd like for someone from the school system to come so they don't have to actually be here, or someone from the community college, or for that point, anybody that you'd like to talk to directly. We can certainly do that. But, but my suggestion to you would be that, that we not put a lot of folks in, in the room, obviously. If we, if, if you wanted to go normally, the way we normally go, it would take a whole lot more time. We'd have to spread it out a whole lot more, and we'd have to go have a whole lot more nights to do that. And, and there's just not, there are just not funds out there. There are just not any additional funds out there right now, so. So I'll take, I'll take your, the board's direction on that, but, but I appreciate any, any comments you may have.
First of all, let me say, I think it's a great and very informative presentation in how you've adapted to the pandemic that we're going through now. So I'll open it up to commissioners and any input that you'd like to add.
So are we scheduled to meet all these nights, nineteenth, twenty-first, twenty-sixth, and twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
Five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Even the service expansion night?
It depends. I mean, if, if you want to bring people in, if you don't, if, you know, that was kind of my suggestion, that there really isn't, I don't, I don't see there being additional funds available unless, unless you as a board want to go in and cut something to provide some additional revenue funds for a service expansion. I would suggest that if you had something in the service expansion that you liked, then let us know, and we can bring that person in, we can bring that agency in where you can talk directly to them.
We could bring them in any night, though, couldn't we?
You could. I, I mean, we can certainly work around that. We were just trying to, just trying to keep the room as, as, the minimal amount of, of staff in the room as possible.
Bearing that in mind, I, I motion that we not meet on the twenty-sixth.
I don't have a problem, sir. Now, that knocks out hearing any service expansions at all, right? Is that right?
For John, that's also known as charities.
Did the twenty-third or twenty-sixth, Brian?
Well, I didn't know that's not that.
Which one?
Well, part of the charities. Just twenty-sixth.
That looks just to rely on the table because we may need it for other things.
Well, we can, we can meet those other nights and meet longer if we need to. There's no end date or end time on the dates that we do meet.
And we can make that decision after the twenty-first.
I think if we do it now, so we'll know going forward. So we can make plans, and the county staff can make plans.
Motion on the floor, call the question.
All those in favor of deleting, what, May twenty-sixth meeting, surface expansion, raise your right hand. All of those oppose? Did you vote, John? Okay, four, now we got five, two. Motion passes. Are we going to delete to May twenty-sixth? Fourth round, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't sell these two.
Don't we meet next Tuesday?
I'm going to come, but I got a board of health meeting. I'm going to go to the board of health meeting and come back. The, aren't we required by statute to meet with the school board?
I don't think so. I'm not, I've never, I can research that, but, but.
I think we're required to have one meeting a year with the school board by statute.
I, I'll check that, but, but I'm not, I may look to David.
We don't have to meet here, we can meet anywhere.
It doesn't say where, but, you know, I, I, I think we.
We ought to have a face-to-face meeting with.
School board and a face-to-face meeting with the community college board. You know, I don't think, I'm not, I'm, I'm not in the corner in a little ball on this thing because we've got no cases in the county. I'm not scared to death about it. I think we ought to do our job.
I would say, it's my, it's my understanding that the school board is meeting virtually is the way they've been meeting.
The statute doesn't say that. It says meet with the school board.
Most statutes.
I'll have to look it up.
I haven't been here long as you, but that's the first time I ever heard that we were bound to have one meeting with them. But if we're all bound to have a meeting with them, I'm willing to do it. But I mean, you just can't, I mean, I want to know the statute's got to be out there.
Well, the manager's going to research it, but I, I, that, that goes along with this lawsuit stuff where school boards weren't talking to commissioners, commissioners weren't talking to school boards, and I'm pretty sure the legislature put in a statute that says you will have one meeting a year.
And I don't, I don't, I don't mind meeting with them, but I just, I just want to see, there's a lot of statutes, I mean.
Well, nobody looks up statute.
I'll be glad to research that. I did, I did ask the finance officer if she recalled that, and she said she didn't recall. So I, we will, we will get you an answer, and I'll work with the county attorney and make sure that's.
But even if the statute doesn't call for that, you're spending seventeen million dollars a year, and nobody in this room knows where it's going. Nobody.
Commissioner Langner?
No, I was just going to simply say, you can just tell us Tuesday. We meet Tuesday. You can tell us then if it exists.
Anything else? Commissioner Waters?
Brian, when you and Anita come in and you start talking about the sales tax, if I understand it correctly, there are some restrictions on, you know, I think there's, what, three different categories of sales tax?
There are actually more than that, but yes. We have a description in the book that talks about the different articles. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Forty-two, forty-three, forty-four.
I, I know that all of the sales tactics that comes in, we can't just throw it in the hopper and put it where we want. It's just making sure that we understand, I mean, if we lose a million dollars and a certain portion of that is earmarked for a certain department, that we, we realize that in the budget processes we'll go through.
You are correct, and, and in your, and in your book, you'll see those where it talks about sixty percent, I can't remember the article, thirty-three or forty-four, sixty percent of that is supposed to go to the school system.
Right, okay.
Things like that. What I will say to you is, historically, we had, as a county, we have held other agencies harmless and essentially eaten that, absorbed that, cut ourselves. So I appreciate your comments in that, in saying we need to make sure that those, that it impacts.
Well, we still can, we still can do that, but I'd like to know what the dollars are, or approximate dollars. Go ahead.
So I guess my question to the board was, are you okay with, with not bringing department heads in unless you've got some specific you need to ask them? I, I think in general, Anita and I certainly are able to, to address any of the questions that may come about, and if not, we can certainly get those answers for you.
I have to. I got one other.
Commissioner Booth?
Okay. Before this process is over, I want to know how many lapse sal, how many lapse salaries we have in the county positions, or how many people that we hadn't filled down through the year. We can do it during the process here.
Okay, so it would, when you ask about lapse salaries, we would have to take a.
People's positions we hadn't filled.
Okay, what, what, what positions that we currently have open that we haven't filled?
Yes, yes.
I am not aware that we, I'm not aware of any right now that we have. I know the sheriff's office has frozen five physicians in this budget to meet their requirement that they come in flat.
And the next thing, I don't know the language, I don't, I do some research, I want to put it out there now so, so by the time we pass the budget, we got to have some language in here that you just can't go in the middle of the year and give raises. We need to have that language in this, in this document.
I think there's an opportunity, and we talked about that previously, that there's an opportunity for the board in the, in the budget ordinance specifically related to the sheriff's office.
What I'm saying, and you did tell us that, but, but somewhere down the line, there's, out of seven of us, we're not that smart, we need somebody to put, to help us put the language in there so we won't have, have to run through the same thing that we've done before, just put the language in there that, that you just can't go in the middle of the year and give raises.
Right. And, and not only that. And, and not only that, we're also still waiting on the, the opinion from the attorney general's office. In fact, I got an email the other day from, from Karen Malons at the school of government who said they had asked her about some things. So I anticipate that sometime soon, you'll certainly get as fast as we can.
I don't want to do anything against statute.
Right.
But the reason I brought that up is, I was just scanning when I got here with this book, there's nowhere in here recommending a, a salary increase, a COLA, anything for our employees.
That's right, because.
And, and then that study has been delayed another year.
That's correct.
And that's the reason I want to put those languages in there, so we can treat all of our employees like we need to be treated, like they need to be treated.
Yes, sir, and appreciate that comment. The, the salary study is on hold. Like I say, based on the growth of the economy this current year until the pandemic hit, we felt like we were in a position to move forward on that. You will always see, if you look in your service expansion, you'll see a 1% COLA and a 2% COLA. We always show COLA as a service expansion. We don't ever show that as a continuation piece because that's something the board needs to look at and make a decision on. We wouldn't just automatically put that in. So, so it's, it's there, it's just you have to take action for it to occur.
Oh, I did, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Richardson?
I guess in that ordinance, are we going to put anything in there that restricts the use of funds to, so that it can't be allocated for personal benefit or personal use like the sheriff says he has the power to do? I think we should.
Anything else? If not, we stand in recess until May 19th, 5 o'clock. It is 5, not 5:30.
It is 5, yes, sir.